Okay, I guess we can wait for the Pledge of Allegiance till everybody gets here also. Clerk Seagres, can we have a roll call, please?
Good evening.
All right, sorry. Slavens?
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect Clerk Seagres is here and he is saying good evening and wishing pleasantries to everybody. Sorry, Foster?
Good evening.
Ganguly?
Good evening.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board go into closed session for three purposes. Two of them are to discuss pending litigation strategy with counsel in the case of Cheddar Township of Canton v. IMAC Properties LLC, Daniel McClausland and Robert McClausland. Oh, and then additionally, an update on for strategy on union negotiations as well.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor, say aye, or do we have to do a roll call?
Do roll call. Berninski?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Ganguly?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay, can I have a motion, please, to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, first on the agenda, we have, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? And just let everybody know that G2 and G7 have slight modifications to the motions if you want to pick them up in the back of the room.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from October 10th, 2023?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, now we have public comment on agenda items only for three minutes. Public comment for agenda items only. Anyone in the room for agenda items only? Public comment? None in the room? Okay, I will go to attendees, online attendees. You can raise your hand if you want to have public comment on agenda items only. I see no hands. Okay, no hands, all right. Public comment for agenda items only is closed. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Slavens, co-supported by many of our trustees. Now say trustee Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, and now on the agenda, we have some of our presentations. And our first presentation is going to be by Aerospace Link. So welcome, please introduce yourselves and then we can get your presentation up.
Excellent, thank you. My name is Michael Heender. I'm co-founder and CEO of Aerospace Link. And we'll be going over a UAS, which stands for drones, assessment for the city. So readiness and assessment of how do communities integrate drones. Drones can be pretty scary. So what we've done as a company is found a way to help integrate and communities work through that process. And before I get started into the UAS assessment and recommendations, is talk a little bit about our company. So we are a FAA-approved service supplier. What's that mean? Is that we're one of only a few companies in the world that help support the integration of drones at 400 feet and below across the entire United States. We are one of the only companies that is also integrating communities into the system along with leveraging, a lot of cities use ESRI technology, GIS systems, land use and zoning that we integrate all of this into a single platform to help integrate drones from a recreational pilot all the way up to air taxis. And how do they integrate? What type of site selection? What does Canton Township offer in this? We're currently servicing three nations, more than 50 governments. Those are cities, counties and states. We have 730 international and local airports integrated into our system with the FAA, including the airports here in Canton Township. We have 19,000 pilots using this platform today. It's hard to believe that there's 19,000 drone pilots in our platform, constantly authorizing flights legally and safely within our national airspace with about 2,000 businesses. So we have ISO compliance. And the neat thing is we're a company that's based here in Detroit. Who would have thought that we have an air traffic control company here in Detroit? We just put our headquarters in Michigan Central, so we broke ground. As a company, we raised about $38 million here locally in southeast Michigan. So we're hiring people locally within the township, these geospatial and software developers. And now we've really settled in with 50 drone, UAS aviation, geospatial, government and tech experts that were creating jobs here in southeast Michigan, which is a big deal for us and to be here native in Michigan to diversify our mobility within the state. So there are a lot of investments going into Michigan right now that people don't realize when it comes to air mobility. It is a big initiative. The state has recently just approved $17 million to integrate UAS in certain locations within the state. We've been part of most of these projects, or all of these projects that you see. Aerospace Link has been supporting those, whether it be at the federal level, the state level, the county level or city level. And then we integrate operators into that, whether it be golf course deliveries of food on City of Taylor, medical delivery of Beaumont Hospital between hospitals and labs in Birmingham and Royal Oak. Operations are up and running for public safety. And that's just here in Michigan. We spend most of our time actually outside of the state. Our team is actually out in the Middle East right now, supporting the integration of drones into Dubai. We are actually deploying there and much happier being here in Canton Township versus there this week. So thank you for supporting us here. So there's a lot of activity that can be very overwhelming. So Monroe County is part of it. Romulus is integrating drones, putting in a drone park and changing their airspace to start to integrate STEM projects. We're working with Eastern Michigan on a $1.4 million STEM grant to integrate, to start to do job training of our students to become pilots. Drone pilots, that's a new opportunity for us here locally. So we're going to need a lot of them. So how do we, you know, we're a software company. But as a community, how do you integrate? It's scary, there's privacy. You know, how do I integrate it into our workflows, public safety, police department? How do residents use it? How do we handle complaints? It can be pretty scary and overwhelming. So we worked with the industry and the FAA, have been a keynote speaker at the FAA, of this way of integrating all these different complexities. What drones should we be buying? How should we support citizens? How do we support this type of technology? What hardware should we use? What hardware do we recommend? What software, what services are out there? How do we handle someone that comes into the city and wants to do a drone takeoff permit? How do you handle that? So we have a process for taking that complexity and working with Canton Township to do an assessment of, you know, what are the different departments? How do they see drones integrating? Do they see the opportunity? One of the biggest calls we get is where can I learn to fly safely? Is there a drone park? How do I get my Part 107 commercial drone license? Is there a place to do that? And a lot of communities just don't even know how to create a free or a place to learn how to fly. So we take them through 50 different processes and create a assessment. And then we create a recommendation based on the community's wants or needs of how to integrate. You're not buying software, you're not buying drones, you're not enabling, you're just figuring out where Canton Township should stand. What would the residents like to see? And that's what this process does. So we've done this throughout the country, from Lansing is doing it, Monroe County. The state did it. The state just paid $600,000 for us to do it. So it's called the UAS feasibility with MDOT. That has gone through, that's what enabled the 17 million. So I just want to pull up an example city, someone that's not local here, so they don't, they're okay with us showing the data. So this is city of Ontario, California. A little bit larger than Canton Township, but not much. They're award-winning. They were our first customer three years ago. They now have the system deployed in every department. They have drone deliveries happening with beer deliveries. They're doing, people with mobility challenges and meals on wheels delivery. They are using drones to support the security of the airport. They're using them for roof inspections. They're using it for areas of, that they can't get to, for water testing. It's unlimited. So they have all these case studies. So what to expect? You'll get a report on what Canton has, what they'd like to see, a roadmap for that. But also each department gets a readout. You know, what, in this case, this city's pretty advanced now. They've been doing this, they do this every year. They do this UAS readiness assessment. And now they actually have what's called a drone as a service provided by their IT and GIS department. Where if someone says, hey, I need to do a roof inspection or run some type of operation, they put in a work order, ticket, and they have people on staff that run flights, operations to collect the data or do work. And they actually have an outside resources that does it as a service. So when they get overwhelmed with too much requests, they have an outdoor service that supports it. So they've put it in a process, because remember, these are mini computers flying around. I don't think cities realize it when they buy drones, or they don't even know they're buying drones. It's a little bit of the wild, wild west, is are they staying compliant? Are they registered? Are they being flown by Part 107 pilots? Some gray area there? And are they using them to the maximum capability? Do they have what's called a COA, Certificate of Authorization to Fly Advanced Capabilities? Do they have a tactical beyond visualized sight waiver that public safety can use? Or fire and rescue and those types of things? So there's a process put in place. And in this case, we're just looking at, they have a public website where they broadcast, here are the rules and federal rules and regulations. Here are some helpful hints on how to fly drones in Canton. They work with building department, starting to use drones for some roof inspections where it's just running up and they're going out there and collecting the data versus going up on the roof and doing dangerous jobs. They're using it, they have a QR code at their parks and rec where you can go there, create, you know, for example, right now, we're in controlled airspace. So where we're standing right now is Willow Run. And it is required that as a recreational pilot or Part 107, you do have to register your flight. So there's a QR code to make recommendations. In this case, the city actually had an ordinance that you couldn't fly motorized aircraft in the city parks. So they made a modification to that and made it so that they could open up in these designated areas. So they have drone parks, they have drone training, kids are learning how to fly and they have places for them to learn. Economic development, they've attracted several drone operating companies. We're working with UPS, they're a user of our platform. We work with the cities to build the federal highways and the local highway systems. And then these larger companies figure out how they can operate, are the communities on board. So it's almost like site selection tools when we look at Canton and say, all right, what would be attractive to a large drone manufacturer company coming here and building their operations here and then being able to test operations near the airport. Finance, we'll skip the, just giving some examples. Utilities, linear inspection. They actually have a drone in a box that's doing operations for security. They're going pretty advanced in some of these communities. This city of Ontario has 15 drones in their public safety group, used for drones as a first responder, is doing all kinds of extremely cool things there. But we can touch that on the assessment. They do drone detection as well. They are also responsible in the city of Ontario for the security around the airport. So they plugged in one of our sensors onto the city hall and they can see what drones are flying within the city within six miles. So they get a text message if a drone flies over certain areas. It's pretty neat technology. It's through a remote ID system, but it does allow when a citizen calls and complains about a drone, you can say, well, it wasn't one of ours, or it was potentially someone. And that is part of the FAA Remote ID sensor system. So all of this can be very overwhelming. That's why we do an assessment. That's the goal. Make some recommendations. And with that, I'll end on this slide because if you think about Aerospace Link, we help, we're like the Google Maps for drones, but the roads are still being worked on. We're building those digitally and then we publish those. And we just got UPS on the upper left-hand corner. The truck is built by a company called Workhorse. They got what's called a 135 approval for operations in North Carolina to do what's called beyond visualized sight drone deliveries of prescriptions. So by working with the communities, working with the data, we package that data up, send it to the FAA that we had approval at all levels of government and they created an operations there. Same with pairing our systems with Alphabet Wing in the upper right. And the other companies that you see on there are some of the advanced systems being leveraged by these communities that set this up. And with that, that is the UAS assessment.
What are some of the local companies that we have here already that are using them?
That are using?
Walgreens is using it somewhere else.
Yes, yep. So we have, there will be a press release by the state of some of the operations that will be approved. So Beaumont is an example one. I actually have a video I can show of Beaumont using it and City of Taylor to do test deliveries between hospital and lab. So when you have blood work done, it tends to be, I guess I don't have the video on there. It tends to be between lab and hospital. So we're just going business to business for right now. But Beaumont would be an example that's publicly talking about their operations setting up. So medical is big between labs and hospitals. Now there are much other companies that I'm not able to say publicly, but there are other companies that are signing up because of the larger investment coming into the state.
Anybody, any of the staff have any questions or comments? No? Any board members? Tanya?
Mentioned something that kind of got my attention. You said one of the entities that you guys work for is doing drone as a service between the departments. What kind of policies guides that kind of service?
So that is the IT department set that up. They also provide GIS services, mapping when someone calls. So they built in their own policy, pretty simple. It's just, you know, they have a ticketing system already. So the IT department already has, when you have an issue, they just put this into their platform as another service that they provide to all the other departments. When you talk about external policies, we do have worked with several communities during that process that they integrated some policies at the community level. So that does support, when we look at your rules and regulations or policies or ordinances, we take a look to see if you have any that will impact drones as well and make sure those are identified. So that's through the process. Every city seems to be different. So we try to keep them the same. We work with the National League of Cities right now on standardizing that process. So it goes across a lot of the communities.
One else on the staff?
My favorite example that he shared when we visited their site was that a lot of our retired elected officials who live down in the villages now are experiencing this, having their prescriptions delivered to their porches. So they may be coming home and saying, hey, we need to integrate this into our community. So I thought that was kind of funny that it's already happening right in a lot of places and it's coming, it's coming very quickly. So it's an exciting opportunity for, I think, for Canton to get in on the ground floor.
Thank you. Tanya?
Thank you for the presentation. It looks very exciting. My only question was, you know, you said that, you know, you're, I'm sure there's some sort of a data that you have in the drone, like, you know, the information that if we are integrating with our township-related services or things like that, as you said, like a roof inspection. Like, I think Victor might have the security of the data. That's what, I know you work with federal governments too, so that's the only question I had.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. So we are more like we build and manage the roads, but then people drive on them with drones. But at the same time, communities sometimes don't realize that those vehicles that they're putting in the air are, need to be looked at, what type of data being collected? How is it being integrated? And then there, each state is starting to create rules around the types of drones and even in the government levels. So we help guide, you know, what are your use cases? Here is a risk of buying this type of drone because of the security issues and why? Now, a lot of people are still buying them because of the best ones out there. But now there's this new set of drones for public safety that are recommended to invest in from a security standpoint. And that would be dealt with through the IT department. What are your standards? What do you have today? And what should you be thinking about when you're taking data off these drones, even from consultants? So that is a process that we go through to the assessment. And then we'll make a recommendation on what's best for the community.
Summer, did you have a question? No? Steven?
Thank you. What about safety? Do you analyze that and deliver information on that in your report that you do for us?
Yeah, so we do a risk assessment, air and ground. So if I was to pull up the city, I can immediately see within our system the air risk, the ground risk. You have critical infrastructure, I could quickly start to see. And we could leverage your GIS and mapping systems to pull up your high tension wires, critical facilities within the township. I don't know what those are, but our system runs through and we run a process of taking a look at even, you know, one of our jobs to get operators approved to fly within these areas is we do have to do a risk analysis. And we do a lightweight version of that for the township, is to say, what is the risk of flying a drone through the city? Is there a jail? There's high tension wires and things like that. So we'll identify those assets, so at least you'll know. When someone comes to say, hey, we'd like to fly drones and you'll have those assets available.
Would a town or city like ours typically already have some laws on the books about flying drones? Are they, or is it the wild west right now and anybody can just go get one and fly one with no restrictions at this point?
Yeah, today, Aerospace Link is one of just a few companies in the world that, we got certified by the FAA. We go through eight months of certification every year to manage the airspace on behalf of the FAA. So if you want to fly and your drone is above a half a pound, it is required that they, especially in controlled airspace, which we're in this building right now. If I went to fly a drone, I'd better use our system or one like it. So it is a bit of the wild west, but there is a process at the federal level where the wild west is, is actually cities, departments buying drones like crazy. Like, we'll walk into a city and like, yeah, we have no drones. We'll meet with departments and say, oh yeah, we have five over here and six over there. And like, whoa. And they're like, yeah, we have no license. So part of it is just, what do we have? And then how do we want to communicate? So it's external, it's about your residents and your businesses, embracing them, making sure they're flying safely. But it's also making sure the community is doing it compliantly and then leveraging the value that they bring. So we look external and internal to that. But it is a wild west in a bit and it's tightening, it's getting more and more. The FAA has put rules and regulations that are coming on, I think, March of next year. It's the next regulation that will hit, which is Remote ID, which requires every drone in the United States and every pilot cannot fly their drone without broadcasting its location and its model number. And then we are working with the FAA and public safety that they'll have a lookup system, just like a license plate, to look up, whose drone is that registered in the FAA registry system? So we're, as a company, our job is to be putting the systems in place to support as the regulations keep coming in.
Our last question, are liabilities and even criminal penalties involved when, and is that on a federal basis or a state or a local basis that need to be put in place? And would they be similar for motor vehicles, the type of operating motor vehicle versus operating a drone?
Yeah, so right now, as soon as the drone is in the air, it would become a federal issue. But it is slowly, because the amount of drones coming onto the market right now are pretty significant. The Remote ID is one step into public safety, being able to at least understand what's happening and start to support. That is coming. Now typical privacy rules and regulations are still within the city's jurisdiction. So if a drone is being used in the sense that is violating a local ordinance, that's where the communities will engage. So there is a clear line that we've been working on with the FAA. We just republished a new fax sheet on local government's role in the federal law because we're caught in the middle as a company. We're a software for the federals, but then all communities. And we used to help you understand how not to violate the federal system. The state too. The state now is starting to put preemptive rules in and the county is starting to get involved. And our job is to help keep everyone in line and not fragmenting the airspace.
Because if a drone crashes into something or drops something on something or someone, it seems like a big mess right now to determine.
As soon as it hits the ground, it becomes a city issue. It's when it's in the air. They don't want it running into another air, you know, crude aircraft system. So our system is watching that. And then our system also is involved in ground hazards as well. And what the impact, to the point where we're taking crash data from the drones and embedding into the platform to understand where it can and can't fly at the lowest, tend to the negative seven probability of impacting someone and hurting them.
Okay.
So far, there's never been a death from a drone dropping out of the sky. So, or even very minor injuries so far around the world.
Thank you.
I have a colleague of mine here peppering me with some questions because he's getting excited about your job. A couple of questions. Do you guys have any background working on traffic congestion issues?
Yes.
That's his first question. And the second question is, what kind of data in terms of GIS platform do you guys put out if we need to use any of those data for our own GIS needs?
Yeah, so we do have, it sounds like they understand GIS. It's a data model, which they'll know what that means. We usually like to pull, if you don't have it, we'll figure it out. But zoning, land use, street center lines, critical infrastructure. There's this, we have a lot of data and then that goes into the model with the air data. And it leverages, it takes your existing data and builds a whole new dataset that most people have never heard of, is a low altitude airspace data model. So that data is used, then used for the operators to look at it. And it's almost like a site selection tool. Does this fit my type of drone? Does this fit the right types of use cases? What types of businesses are in Canton Township? What do I have to fly over Canton Township to get into Willow Run? How would I enter and exit? Is there a train line through here that I can follow along the train line? I can't mention the types of companies we have using our system today. Would love to be able to understand how to interact or communicate with Canton Township. That's holding up a lot of operations, is when an operation or operator or company comes to a city, we've been stuck for six months just trying to explain what's going on. They're so behind that then we'll just go to a different city. And that's the opportunity for Canton Township. At least you'll know what you can and can or want to do and be able to move operations quickly. With the first, I get it all? Oh, traffic? So it depends what type of traffic. Air traffic is one thing where we are working on a much larger system. MDOT is, we're supporting them in surveillance of manned aircraft. So when aircraft comes through, a helicopter, we're able to make decisions with the advanced operators. The other thing is traffic. We also were hired to figure out the traffic reduction by using drones in some cases versus vehicles and the reduction of crashes and CO2 emissions. That's in a report that will come out by MDOT pretty soon. And then in Ecuador, of all places, we have our system running and they are trying to reduce the traffic by 1% through the city. It's a thousand drone deliveries per day instead of motorcycles. So that is actually a whole different model. So I'm not sure what the traffic model was, but we're dealing with three different ones. Welcome.
So basically, right now, we would own all the airspace above Canton except for what the FAA owns under the controlled airspace, which I think you said was 400.
They own all the airspace, even uncontrolled ultimately. It's what you fly over. So when I create an area of operation of where I want to fly, it's analyzing the airspace, but also analyzing what you're flying over in the sense of what type of hazards? What are the building heights? What are the tree heights? What do you have any towers? What does the utility line systems look like? Are there schools, hospitals, jails, helipads? All of that data is pulled in, so the community supports that. It's really about where you're landing and taking off that we're seeing that's starting to interact with where the emergency takeoff and landing zones in Canton. What would be good properties?
Because we also have a Mettaul Airport in Canton.
You.
So if we decide, like, let's say that we bring drones in, but we see a little bit congested in an area, can we, as government, control that and say, no more in this area? Or is that now owned by?
You can put what's called an advisory, a community advisory, so that people know, because when people come from out of town and come here to fly, because we get that a lot, there's people flying over photographers and weddings, they have no clue what they're walking into. So what you can do is when we do the analysis, you can post advisories that, hey, this is, this airport is used quite a bit, this is the traffic patterns. I mean, my son flies out of Canton Airport, I don't know the exact name of it, but through Civil Air Patrol, so he's flying around, he's a drone pilot too. So we know that, because we're local, we live in Northville. So what we do is we take your data and publish it through the federal system, and when people come here to fly, they can preanalyze where they shouldn't fly and the risk levels. But it is a community advisory is the name of it, it's called an advisory to the ASTM standards.
If we have a neighborhood, let's say, that's using it a lot, and we want to control the times, because, you know, they might be loud, can we do that? Can we cut back?
Today, you cannot. You can put an advisory that would say, we have this now. Can you do it? You can absolutely do it, but the FAA would not be happy, because then community is controlling the airspace. So there are some ways to work through the system, but we'd have to understand how it would be approached. And again, that's part of the assessment. It's not the same. New York City is doing something very bold and very different there, which is a whole other story, but they're able to do that. Every community in every state is different. Canton, we'd have to understand what some of the ordinances are within the city or township.
Any other questions or comments? No? All right, thank you very much. Thank you for your proposal, and your, this is very interesting and exciting.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. I know you're going to be presenting to CWW soon also.
Yes.
I think in December, is that right? Okay, great. Here in Canton again. Next, we have another presentation from the Cultural Commission, the annual report.
Hello, thank you for having us. I am Kira Messina, and I am the Chair of Canton Township's Commission for Culture, Arts and Heritage, and I'm here with my Vice Chair.
I'm Hesina, Vice Chair of the Commission.
So we are going to present to you our strategic plan. Every year, we do revisit this, and we develop and refine our goals, and it's just such a great group, and it's changed actually over the years, and you can see that we have about 17 members of the Commission. I believe there are two vacancies, and it's a nice diverse group representing the Partnership for the Arts, Plymouth Canton Schools, general, the general public, and people who have connections to faith communities. So there are, we do meet quarterly, and we have been, we were founded in 2003, so actually we're celebrating our 20th anniversary. So we were appointed to three-year terms, and it's just been a really great opportunity for us to be involved in the community. So as I mentioned, we're here to talk about the strategic plan. We do present to you yearly, this is the first time that I have had the opportunity to, I think staff might have in the past. And we really this year kind of took a look at it differently as the community has evolved, as the needs for leisure services has changed. We wanted to take a look at the mission, which has been many years since we've done so. So the mission is to enrich the Canton community by celebrating its diversity, promoting its creative spirit, and honoring its history. We also actually really took a look at the vision. This one, I think, changed quite a bit from trying to reflect what we wanted to be in the arts community to really kind of encompassing everything that we can offer to the Canton community, and this is really, we want to lead an engaged, fulfilled, and unified community. So with that, we also took a look at our roles as commissioners, and really, what are we, how can we best support leisure services and really go out into the community? So commissioners act as conveners, communicators, catalysts, and insurers for culture, arts, and heritage opportunities in the township. So as a convener, this is really to bring the diverse community together. We act as ambassadors at events and programs. We are to volunteer at a minimum of six programs per year, or six events, and then we take those, that experience back to the Commission and to staff, and really try to provide feedback on how best to reflect our community and what they want and need. So next is also to act as a communicator, and this is to create awareness of culture, arts, and heritage opportunities in the township, and this is done through promotion of these programs through social media, word of mouth, and also through print.
I'll just close by summarizing what commissioners do. We have one right here, and we serve as a connection between the Commission and the communities. The reality is that there are many events that happen in Canton that people from diverse backgrounds, Canton is growing, and not everybody gets to know what's actually happening. So if something is happening by Organized Partnership for Arts, we had, I think it's the summer, the spring event, and it's a new, it's relatively new compared to other events happening in Canton. So many times, people don't know about it. So if we have faith-based groups, we have ethnical, you know, different cultural groups, youth groups, homeschool groups, so we let, we as ambassadors would let them know about these events. So this way, we increase the participation into these events and the diversity of those who participate. And the other way around as well, if there's something happening, let's say, an art-related event at PSAP, right? So our youth representative or youth ambassador would let the Commission know about it, and this way we can kind of exchange information and exchange resources as well. And at the end, we also, the next one, please, we also share resources. So if we have a new artist, for example, a youth artist, or somebody that is from the gurdwara, somebody wants to share a new, like, a song, or they want to sing, or they want to perform, so we would share, connect those resources with the Commission and give an opportunity for them to participate at maybe the Village Theater or any other event that's happening. So this way, we are tapping into a larger pool of artists and talent, and this is a win-win for everybody.
Do you have any questions?
I, as a commissioner myself, I just wanted to add that in the last meeting, we really worked shop the mission and the vision, so I hope, you know, we all work together in what we would like to see Canton to be in the future, and what exactly you're doing. Now, we have a sheet that our township employees, Laura especially, passes around, and we volunteer for different events, so that way we build that relationship with the community and let them know that we have a commission.
Great, I know you guys have done a lot of different things and a lot of new things too, which is exciting. Diane?
I'll just say, thank you for the presentation, it was wonderful, and we do appreciate all the new things that you're bringing to us.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board approve the Consent Calendar as presented, Item C1. Consider Request to Increase Blanket Purchase Order for Applied Innovation. Consider, C2, Consider Authorization of Permit for Private Fireworks Display at BAPS, Hindu Temple. C3, Consider Authorization of a Permit for Fireworks Display in Heritage Park. And finally, Item C4, Consider Second Reading of an Amendment to Chapter 14, Animals in the Canton Township Code of Ordinances Regarding Dogs in Parks and Dog Licensing.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, on to the general calendar. Not getting my bookmarks, okay. Consider Special Land Use and Site Plan Amendment for Redevelopment of Mobile Automobile Filling Station and Convenience Store.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the following resolution. Approval of the Special Land Use and Site Plan Amendment for Redevelopment of Mobile Automobile Filling Station and Convenience Store, whereas project sponsor has requested special land use approval and site plan approval for redevelopment of an automobile filling station and convenience store on subject tax parcel at 8773 North Hagerty Road, whereas Planning Commission reviewed the special land use application and applicable criteria, voted nine to zero to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the criteria of special land use approval in Section 27.03 subsection C of the zoning ordinance, and whereas Planning Commission reviewed the site plan application and applicable criteria, voted seven zero to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the requirements of the Charter Township of Canton zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees, the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the special land use and site plan in planning, subject planning application numbers respectively, for the redevelopment of the automobile filling station and convenience store at 8773 North Hagerty Road on subject tax parcel as the request meets the special land use criteria and development standards of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including any required plan modifications required by the Planning Commission and Township staff.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The project sponsor has proposed to redevelop the automobile filling station at 8773 North Hagerty Road, located at the southwest corner of North Hagerty and Joy. The project includes, in addition to the convenience store, relocation of the diesel canopy and pumps. The current use of the site is an automobile filling station and car wash, and the car wash is proposed for demolition without replacement. The site is ZONE C3, Regional Commercial and Redevelopment of an Existing Automobile Filling Station is a special land use in the C3 district, subject to the use standards of the zoning ordinance. Planning Commission approval of the special land use on July 10, 2023, and recommend approval of site plan on October 2, 2023. The zoning Board of Appeals approve variances related to the redevelopment project on August 10 and October 12, 2023. Patrick, do you want to add anything?
Sure, thank you. This is a project that the applicant's been working on for, I think, over a year now in terms of the redevelopment of the gas station, to add a little bit more space to the convenience store, remove the car wash that's there, and to rebuild the diesel canopy pumps specifically by separating them, so they'll have their own access drives. Right now, there's common access between the diesel canopy pumps and the gasoline canopy pumps, and because those diesel pumps primarily serve trucks, it'll be good to separate those vehicle uses from the passenger vehicles using the gas pumps and the heavy vehicles using the diesel pumps. With that, and the expansion of the convenience store, the architecture will be a little nicer.
I think, Summer, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Any questions or comments? Steven?
Thank you, Patrick. I noticed there was discussion in the Planning Commission about stacking of traffic. Is there something changing here, or is it going to be the same?
For the gasoline pumps, the stacking will be much the same. That area of the site can meet the ordinance standards in terms of the passenger vehicle stacking on the site for gasoline pumps. The stacking issue becomes an issue with diesel trucks that enter the diesel canopies going southbound on Old Hagerty Road. And Old Hagerty Road, it's a cul-de-sac dead-end road, it only serves a handful of parcels. Most of them are industrial and the gas station, so it's very limited access for passenger types of vehicles. Most of it's employees, heavy trucks, industrial trips. And so the angle of the pumps right now will be more or less maintained with the diesel pumps that are proposed, where trucks will enter southbound on Old Hagerty Road, enter the drive into the diesel canopies, and they'll fill through one of the pumps there. So technically, the ordinance requires that there be room for two vehicles stacked on the site, and for the heavy trucks, it just doesn't meet that, because if there are semi-trucks, the site would just be too small, we would need a massive amount of land area. So that stacking is not met for the trucks. More often than not, there's plenty of pumps available for the trucks that will come. If in the unlikely event where a vehicle had to wait and wasn't able to stack and was on Old Hagerty Road, it wouldn't cause any backups, because it's pretty far down off of Joy Road, and it would only impact surrounding land uses, which could probably go around that, given the width of the road.
Okay, thank you. I thought the design looked very good and modern, and I saw that the Planning Commission discussed it a lot, so I'm fine with that.
Yeah, this is just because I was curious, but I see in the elevation and then also on the floor plans, it looks like there's a small second story, and I was just curious what that's going to be used for, because I don't see it in the description.
Yeah, in some of our discussions with the applicant, it would be like office, like administrative office for the owner, perhaps some storage.
Okay, yeah, it just seemed unusual, because you don't usually see a, like, a convenience store that has a second story.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G2, Consider Award of a Contract to AKT Peerless Environmental Services to Perform a Phase Two Environmental Site Assessment and Baseline Environmental Assessment at the Village Arts Factory Warehouse.
Madam Supervisor, I had initially filed an affidavit of disclosure on the transaction between the township and the Partnership for the Arts property, based on the fact that I serve on both governing bodies. Because this Phase Two Site Assessment involves that purchase, I would ask that the Board allow me to be recused from voting on this issue and from making the motion.
Madam Supervisor, I move to recuse Clerk Seegerst from voting on G2.
Motion made by Trustee Berninski, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion passes. Who would like to read the motion?
I can read it if you want.
..................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
AKT Peerless Environmental Services has provided a proposed budget that ranges from sixty thousand to two hundred thirty thousand. The range is wide due to the different measures that could be needed to remediate and restore the site. After a review of AKT Peerless Environmental Services' Phase One environmental site assessment and proposal to perform the Phase Two environmental site assessment, baseline environmental assessment, and a due care plan by Canton's legal counsel, it is recommended to award a contract to AKT Peerless Environmental Services to perform a Phase Two environmental site assessment, baseline environmental assessment, and a due care plan for two hundred thirty thousand, with a ten percent contingency of twenty-three thousand for a final total amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand. Please note that AKT Peerless Environmental Services has provided timely and accurate services to the township in the past. So, would this be commented on then by, by you and John? Okay.
Nothing really additional to add. I'll do my best to answer any questions as I'm standing in for Mr. Norwood. A couple of things I think you did mention in the background. It is worst-case scenario of the two hundred and thirty thousand. Our best-case scenario is the sixty thousand, and that's what we're hoping for. Upon authorization, they predict a four-week completion, so we'll have the report back pretty quickly as well.
Any questions for the board? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item G three, consider authorization of professional engineering services in issuing a purchase order to Spalding De Decker Associates for the twenty twenty-four Residential Road Improvement Program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order contract for the twenty twenty-four Residential Road Improvement Program to Spalding De Decker Associates, incorporated in the amount of four hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, with a five percent contingency of twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars, for a total of four hundred seventy-four thousand six hundred dollars, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In two thousand eighteen, Canton Township passed a road millage and retain SDA through a competitive bidding process to oversee and manage a residential road improvement program. Engineering Services has now successfully completed five years of these projects with SDA. Based on the performance and the success of the program, Engineering Services recommends retaining SDA for design and construction engineering services for the twenty twenty-four program. The township is entering the sixth year of the millage program. On an ongoing basis, the township has been soliciting applications from homeowner associations and resident groups to participate in the residential road improvement program. Township staff meets with all the applicants to determine the initial scope of work. Following that, SDA completes the detailed engineering permitting and construction oversight. SDA has provided the attached proposal in the amount of four hundred fifty-two thousand, with a five percent contingency of twenty-two thousand six hundred added. A total award of four hundred seventy-four thousand six hundred for design and construction services for the twenty twenty-four Residential Road Improvement Program is being requested. John, do you have anything to add? We've done about, what, fifteen miles worth now?
Yeah, that's what I heard, too, when I was speaking with Charles. The only question I had when reviewing it in preparation for today, and I think he outlined here, is it did go through the competitive bid process with SD, so they're just bringing forth year number seven, or six, I'm sorry, year number seven with SD. So, they've been very happy with them, and they want to continue that partnership.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Michael?
I'll just, you know, briefly say, I, you know, been really happy with Spalding De Decker's work in designing all of the Township Road program from up to this point. They've, they've done a phenomenal job in, in their oversight of it, and so I'm happy to renew this, and I think this is one of the crown jewels of Canton Township government.
I will just say I agree with everything that Clerk Seeger's just said.
All right, thanks. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G four, consider approval of contract and budget amendments for the CSC Kickers ADA Walk Improvements.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract with Simone Construction or Simon Construction Services for hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars in the budget amendments, and the attached budget amendments.
Or?
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. On September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, an RFP was publicly advertised for the Canton Sports Complex Kickers Walk Improvements. Two proposals were received and reviewed under Canton Township's responsible contracting policy. Canton's Community Development Block Grant Services, Leisure Services, and Engineering Department are recommending awarding the contract to Simone Construction Services for a total amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred seventy dollars, which will be funded using twenty twenty-two program year CDBG funds. John, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to thank the Finance Department for support and help in organizing this, as well as the Leisure Service Department at CSC, as this will kind of intermingle with one of my projects for the lighting at CSC, with the heavy equipment going through the concrete here. So, we pulled all those folks together in a meeting and developed a plan where we can utilize what's already damaged, and if it further gets damaged, it's going to get removed and replaced brand-new. So, it's in a good sequence here, so I appreciate everybody's cooperation.
Great, thank you. Director Homberger, do you have anything to add?
Nothing further.
Thanks. Any questions from the board? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G five, consider award of CDBG housing rehabilitation contracts.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the housing rehabilitation contract to optimum contract listing below totaling twenty-five thousand and to reimburse all the permit fees once the work has been completed and approved by the Building Department.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Under Canton's Affordable Housing Program, federal dollars are used to pay for major and minor repairs to owner-occupied single-family homes in Canton. The participating families must meet HUD income requirements. Formal bid procedures were followed, and the public bid opening was held September twenty, twenty twenty-three for the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program. Bids were received from two vendors. We're requesting to approve a contract for HUD CDBG-funded home rehabilitation project that exceeds the ten thousand purchasing threshold. Director Trumbo, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Who supported that motion? My apologies. Perfect.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G six, consider approval of budget amendment and purchase order for repair of the Village Theater Projects.
Madam Supervisor, I move to submit a purchase order to Tel Systems for a total amount of fourteen thousand three hundred dollars, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support?
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The two largest projectors at the Village Theater are in need of repair due to their extended use. These projectors are utilized for the majority of background sets and graphics projected on stage of the theater. Without these projectors, the quality of the theater and cable productions is greatly diminished, as the projectors primarily impact Canton Cable's ability to film and broadcast theater productions at a superior level. The cost of the repairs will be funded from the cable budget through cable peg fees requiring a budget adjustment. The total cost of repairs amounts to fourteen thousand three hundred dollars after the partial warranty is applied. And Treasurer Slavens made that motion. Director LaFever, do you have anything to add?
No, just as is stated, these are crucial elements of the theater. We've got a couple on loan right now from the company, as they looked at and are ready to service our current projectors. So, these are so massive that they actually have coolant and pumps. They pump coolant through them to keep them cool, so they've been shutting themselves down. So, yeah, big items, big ticket items, but this will be covered through some of our cable fees to help us maintain the projectors for cable purposes.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, it looks like the repairs are partially covered by the warranty also. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, most of the items were covered. There were a couple, you know, things related to the pumps and the coolant were not, unfortunately. So, the portion that you're seeing is, is the part that Canton is on the hook for that wasn't covered.
Okay. Madam Supervisor, there's some legislation pending, I think, that hopefully hasn't gone through yet that would affect our peg fees. Is that correct?
Yes, it already went through the House. So, basically, what it does is it stops, the streaming services approached our legislature and asked that no fees be added in the future, and unfortunately, that did pass through the House, so we contacted our Senate, Dana Polhanke, and asked her to, you know, vote no. What also happens is, from what we were told by CWW, is that there's a, the FCC has a parody ruling, and probably Joe could explain more on this, but what it means is that the cable companies are watching in the balcony, because if this passes, then they're going to approach and say, well, they don't have to pay fees anymore. You don't, they won't have to pay fees, so we shouldn't have to pay them anymore either, which would affect our funding for our theaters and things like this.
Thank you.
Steven?
Is this, did the company say that this is typical for needing repairs like this after three years?
I wouldn't, I'm not for certain, but I would say, no, not typical, which is why they've provided us loaners and did a lot of the work under warranty coverage. So, this is actually a pretty small portion of the, of the work that we're actually having to pay for. So, they've been very helpful in this process. So, I don't think it's typical, no, not of a three-year-old projector.
Else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion passes. Item G seven, consider approval of the commercial use of Cherry Hill School by Hazel Coffee.
Madam Supervisor, subject to legal approval of the Hazel Coffee House lease agreement, I move to approve the commercial use of the Cherry Hill School, Canton Township facility, under the terms of the proposed lease agreement, and authorize Township supervisors to sign the lease agreement on behalf of the Canton Township.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Hazel Coffee has been leasing space at the Village Arts Factory through twenty twenty-three, as well as participating as a vendor at the Canton Farmers Market. Hazel Coffee has become an integral part of Cherry Hill Village and wishes to continue to develop their business with the intention of long-term growth. The use of the Cherry Hill School on a part-time basis and in cooperation with all current uses of the space has been identified as a mutual benefit for both the Township and Hazel Coffee. As such, both parties agree on the terms of use, which would span November first, twenty twenty-three, through May fourth, twenty twenty-four. Section fifty forty-eight of the Code of Ordinances lists the Cherry Hill School as an eligible leisure services facility for the Township Board to permit commercial use with approval. In consideration of the successful relationship established between Canton and Hazel Coffee, the growing interest by residents in developing activity in Cherry Hill Village, and the unique fit with current reservations, leisure services, and community development are seeking approval for the commercial use of Cherry Hill School under the terms of the lease agreement between Canton and Hazel Coffee. Director LaFever, do you want to add anything?
Nothing to add. I appreciate the comments and questions that have come kind of along the way, but be happy to answer anything further.
Questions or comments? Steven?
I don't know if this is one that you received, but will they be providing the service in both locations now?
That's a good question. No, they, the intent is to be serving from the Cherry Hill School throughout the winter months. So, we
Oh, winter, okay.
See this as a nice pilot program. As you know, they've been serving from their mobile unit. Winter's coming, so they want to continue the success they've had and the popularity that they have with their residents and local businesses there in Cherry Hill Village. So, we're kind of running this as a, as a pilot program and utilizing a space that, you know, during the hours that are going to be part of their operation that typically are not, not used by any other group. The church will continue to use the school on Sundays. That's part of our long-term rental with them, and we've got rehearsal groups that occupy the school almost every evening of the week that'll still be able to do so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G eight, consider approval of an expense increase for Livonia Aquatics Agreement.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the budget amendment as stated in the budget implications and account number section of the RBA, and to approve a purchase order in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars to Livonia Kirksey Recreation Center.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Summit on the Park is requesting a forty thousand dollar increase to cover the anticipated expenses for the Summit on the Park membership visits at Livonia Kirksey Recreation Center. A budget amendment will be necessary. With the Summit on the Park Aquatic Center being closed for approximately three and a half months due to the tile project, the township has worked out agreements with three surrounding communities to allow summit members to use their aquatic center during closure. Canton Leisure Services staff estimated approximate cost of five thousand per community for the three hundred, I'm sorry, for the three and a half months of service of the three centers. Livonia Kirksey Recreation Center originally charged Canton Township their non-resident rate of nineteen dollars a person, which is the highest of all three community centers. After receiving our first invoice from each community center, which covers the first six weeks of service, we found that Livonia Facility received approximately a thousand visits from Canton members totaling nineteen thousand dollars during this time. The cost prompted staff to contact Livonia to see if an agreement could be worked out to lower the cost per visit for the remaining contract. Livonia agreed to present to their board and based on approval would charge Canton residents their resident fee of nine fifty per visit beginning November first. Their vote is going to take place on November fifteenth. Greg, do you have anything to add?
Just that, this is kind of a victim of the success of the program. I would say that when we implemented this program, we certainly did not expect this many of our summit members to take us up on the offer to go to other locations. The good part is that we are continuing to see our current members renew their memberships, keeping our membership revenue. It's not quite as high as it was last year, but we're very close to where we were last year. So, we are actually doing quite well in our membership revenue on a month-to-month basis since the pool has shut down. So, I think this program is certainly helping compared to the last time that we shut down for pool maintenance for a couple of months. We lost a lot of members that took years to recover from. So, I think this, it's a tough pill to swallow, but it's money well spent to retain our members and keep our residents happy.
Questions or comments? Summer?
So, are residents going to the other municipalities, or is everyone going to Livonia?
We've offered them other ones, but it seems like everyone's going to Livonia. We offered Washington County and Romulus, but at the six-week mark, we had a thousand at, just as the numbers are stuck in my head for two of them, we had a thousand at Livonia and forty-six at Washington County. I don't remember the number off the top of my head for Romulus, but it was maybe a hundred and fifty-ish, two hundred, so nowhere near the numbers, and of course, Livonia was the most expensive. So, just worked out that way, I guess.
Thank you.
Anyway, Kate?
Yeah, so, based on the numbers that you gave us so far, I think it was through, like, October sixteenth or something, it, it looks like we're well over fifteen hundred visits there.
That's correct.
Are you sure this for, the extra forty thousand is going to cover us?
Based on the price going down to nine fifty and the trend that we're seeing, because I've seen, they've sent me a week-by-week trend of how many people are showing up, and we are seeing it declining week to week, as the, kind of as schools started and those sorts of things. It's a little more difficult to take your family out there, so not as many people are going right now as they were in September and August. So, I'm fairly confident that we'll be okay with this, with this forty thousand. If not, we may need to come back for more, but I think we'll be okay with this number.
Okay. Do you have an estimated time that the summit will reopen?
John? Mid-December is still our target.
Okay, so maybe another seven or eight weeks?
Correct.
Okay. I just, I would hate for you to, for you to have to come back.
I, I hope not to have to, and they seem to be making good progress. We're still targeting mid-December. Optimistic it could be sooner, but we'll see how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Are, are members only allowed to go swimming, or do they use other features at these?
They can really use anything, because there's no control once you go in the front door, just like at the summit here. Once you come in, we don't, we don't have a way of monitoring.
Okay. They're going to start asking for a climbing wall?
Could be. Got room, we can climb up to the peak. It's always been one of our wishes. Could be. Got room, we can climb up to the peak. It's always been one of our wishes.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, consider request to renew antivirus subscription.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of a purchase order in the amount not to exceed $18,270 payable to CDW Government for the renewal of Bit Defender software support and maintenance services for three, three years.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Brindinsky. ITI Services is requesting permission to renew our software services support agreement for Bit Defender antivirus, which expires on December 3rd, 2023. The township utilizes Bit Defender antivirus software to protect the township's suite of computer workstations and servers. Maintaining access to support and timely updates is critical to the continuity of township operations and services.
Director Begbu, do you want to add anything?
Not at this time, but I will take questions.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, I'm sorry, G 10, consider approval of DocuSign annual renewal.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of a purchase order in the amount not to, amount not exceeding $16,979 payable to CDW Government for DocuSign annual renewal and support.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Township Board approved the adoption of DocuSign on October 25th, 2022, and it was subsequently implemented across various departments in the township. Since then, the number of DocuSign e-signature licenses have been increased to 15 seats based on the needs of the departments. After assessing our annual usage, DocuSign has recommended eliminating the contracts, license management, essential solution due to underutilization and inefficiencies in how e-signature and CLM work together.
Director Begbu, do you want to add anything?
Just to note that originally, when we got DocuSign, we got it with CLM, which is a contract management solution. But since then, we've seen an uptick in terms of the actual e-signature component of it. So we made a decision to kind of cancel the CLM, which, which hasn't been used, and to create more, more space for the e-signature, which is something that we've been using very well. We see adoption of it going up and up, and we can only, you know, project that it will be heavily utilized in the months and years to come.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G 11, consider request to decrease, increase fire department blanket POs.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve decreasing the blanket purchase order issued but to Phoenix by $3,200 and increasing the blanket purchase order issued to municipal emergency services by $3,200 to accommodate the fire department's turnout gear purchases in 2023.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. At the beginning of 2023, the Board approved blanket purchase orders for municipal emergency services in Phoenix for the purchase of turnout gear. After analyzing the department's purchasing needs for the remainder of the year, we're requesting to decrease funds from the Phoenix purchase order and increase funds for the municipal emergency services purchase order. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
Nothing to add, but happy to answer any questions.
The motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
G 12, consider waiving the bidding process authorizing agreement for architectural and engineering services for the fire station number four, along with an associated amendment to the 2023 fire budget.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve waiving the bidding process and authorizing an agreement for architectural and engineering services for fire station number four with Partners in Architecture in the amount of $570,900 and the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Brindinsky. Partners in Architecture has prepared a proposal for architectural and engineering services and projected reimbursable costs for fire station number four. Total cost for the proposed services is $570,900. Fire Department is requesting to waive the bidding process and utilize the services of Partners in Architecture due to their ability to provide an aggressive timeline by reutilizing design and documentation from the fire station number two project. And we just had a study session on this last week. Director Stockline, do you want to add anything?
Just that I appreciate your support on this, and I'm looking forward to getting moving on this. And it's, like I said at the study session, it's an aggressive schedule, but I think that we can stick to it. And, you know, finishing Station Two and now public safety in this, I'm pretty sure I'm going to lose the rest of my hair. So that's it.
Didn't realize you still had some, so.
Any questions or comments? All those, Kate?
I just wanted to say that I'm super excited about this. I think we all concur with that.
And I, I would just want to take this moment to again thank Representative Ranjiv Puri for working diligently in the state legislature to bring some of our taxpayer dollars home to us so that we can help, we can pay for this. And Senator Polhanke as well.
You're here.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G 13, request to alter part-time wages for election inspectors.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to accept and concur with the Board of Election Commissioners for the Charter Township of Canton's recommendation approving the new wage structure for part-time election inspectors as follows. Any individual who works longer than 16 hours will be accruing an hourly rate over the approved, attached stipend.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Township must administer early voting in 2024 for the first time in history. Canton currently employs up to 350 inspectors for an election. Election inspectors are a major component in the election process. In 2020, the Election Commission recommended they receive hazard pay in light of the increased physical safety risk and increased workload from a historic shortage of inspectors. The rates for inspector were set at $300 for co-chair and 200 for inspector. The Clerk's Office conducted a salary study of poll workers from 16 jurisdictions and 11 entry-level service sector jobs. In the four years since the salaries were set based, level compensation has risen substantially. Canton currently has the fourth lowest compensation level. The Election Commission unanimously voted to recommend increasing poll workers' pay and establishing alternate rates for the different methods of voting. The following rates are for one day of work. If an inspector goes over 16 hours of work, they will begin to accrue an hourly rate at $18 or 22, depending on their appointed role. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add to that?
I would defer to my election commissioners if they have anything else to add.
Yeah, I think this helps give more parity in pay between workers who might typically only work for, say, eight hours or 12 hours, and those who have to work until ballots are finished being counted, which could be many more hours.
Yeah, we had an election commission meeting last week, and the data that was presented really reflected, you know, we really need these election poll workers, and this really helps by, you know, by being competitive, and we can really get the poll workers that can work for us. Otherwise, if you run shortage of poll workers, it really causes a lot of stress in the election process. And with all the new rules that we have this year, I think this really helps in, as Kate mentioned, it brings everything to parity.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G 14, consider their approval of benefit enhancements to full-time employees. Consider the expansion of stop-loss insurance to include fully insured retirees.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the enhancement of benefits for employees as referenced in the table below.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Township offers an extensive benefit package to its employees. However, to remain competitive and assist with retention, the township has reviewed its benefits and found several areas to offer enhancements beginning in 2024. Benefits enhancements will be applied relative to the details of each union contract. Increasing the annual maximum dental benefit from 1,000 to 1,500, adding vision insurance to Canton's benefit package, this will replace optical reimbursement, increasing the life insurance benefit from 50,000 of coverage to 100,000 for all employees, increasing the long-term disability maximum from 2,000 to 4,000 dollars. Additionally, an expansion of the current stop-loss insurance is proposed to include fully insured retirees and to protect the township against catastrophic claims. Deputy Supervisor and our manager, Rochelle Howell of HR, have worked on this for a while, just basically looking at what other, what else is out there to offer our township employees. Do you want to comment on that, Joe?
No, I don't have a whole lot to say about it other than to thank our human resources manager, Rochelle Howell, for shopping some of our insurance policies through Capneq and coming up with a benefit package that doesn't result in any increase in what's been budgeted for 2024. And will provide better benefits for our employees and our retirees.
Thank you. Rochelle, do you want to add anything?
Yes, thank you so much for the consideration of this. I think that it will be very helpful to our employees, and it will help greatly with the retention of staff. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Anne?
I just want to thank you both for working on this. It's a wonderful thing. We want to give our, our employees the most we can, and so I appreciate all of the hard work you've done.
Thank you, yeah. As times change, we have to change with the times. So it's important to make sure we're on top of this. I can't remember the last time we changed this. And just a question, did we, I can't remember, did we have stop-loss insurance for these benefits in the past?
We did have stop-loss in a limited fashion. It did not include our fully insured retirees, and so this will give us a better coverage for that particular population.
Thanks, it makes sense.
Yeah, I just want to express my, my gratitude as well. As somebody who supervises seven individuals in my office, it's encouraging to see an administration, a human resources department that, without even being asked, without being prompted, looks at the benefits and thinks about a way to find some low-hanging fruit that will substantially increase the quality of life for Canton Township employees. And to do it in a way that doesn't break the bank, you know, it can't be understated the significance of moving from like, something simple as an optical reimbursement to optical insurance, that in and of itself for individuals who have glasses, that's, that's huge. That, you know, that vision insurance is, is a huge thing. You know, the dental benefit increase as well. And there's just a lot here. I'm extremely grateful. I think it says a lot about the values, and it's consistent with what the board kind of threw down as our values in, in 2020, about wanting to be a, not just a welcoming community, but we wanted to have a supportive workforce. And, and so I'm, I'm very grateful for this. So thank you for doing, for doing this.
Anyone else? The team worked hard, and thanks for, like, everybody said, thank you. And, I mean, if you even look at the, I mean, increasing insurance benefit from 50 to 100, then employees also will have the option, incorrect on me if I'm wrong, Rochelle, to choose even more if they pay for it at a group rate. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, Madam Supervisor.
All right, thanks. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G 15, approve lease agreement between Canton Township and Canton Chamber of Commerce and authorize the supervisor to sign all documents necessary to finalize lease agreement.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the property lease agreement between Canton Township and the Canton Chamber of Commerce and authorize the supervisor to sign all necessary documents to finalize the lease agreement.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Canton Chamber of Commerce, a Michigan nonprofit corporation, is interested in leasing a meeting room located in the basement of the Canton Township Administration Building. They'll be leasing Meeting Room D for a term of October 25th, 2023, until October 31st, 2024. Under the lease agreement, the township supervisor may extend the term for one year if requested by the tenant at least 30 days prior to the expiration. The Chamber of Commerce will pay the township $750 a month on the first of every month starting November 1st of 2023. The Chamber of Commerce will also be solely responsible for all interior maintenance and repairs, interior decorations, related services for the premises. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that the Canton Chamber is, is eager to move in, because I believe they have sold their building at Canton Center in Hanford and are currently without a home.
Any questions or comments? Stephen?
I remember when we discussed in study session, the room we thought might be available in the evenings for community, or is it going to be fully occupied?
My understanding is that the chamber is planning to occupy the meeting room during regular business hours. But the, the room will be outfitted for, you know, office purposes. To the, so to the extent that it would be made available, whoever used it would have to kind of work around that.
I, I'm not sure what our capacity has been for rent, not renting, but reserving those rooms. So I'm sure we can find a way around it.
Kate?
Yeah, I know one of the concerns that the board had when we were initially told that the chamber was inquiring about this is utilities, and I see that the township will pay for most utilities, but that the tenant, which would be the chamber, will pay for its own internet service and telephone service. I'm just wondering how that's going to work. Are they going to have lines installed, or are they going to be utilizing our lines?
Yeah, so what, what we've kind of agreed to is that they will not be on any of our networks. So they can use like the guest signal for like their phone or for internet services if they want to, but that's a publicly available signal. But if they want, you know, their own service, they have to kind of provide their own service. And that is with regard to internet, phone, you know, anything else that, anything else that they might need. So they have that understanding along with the township in this agreement. In terms of how it would work, I would defer to our ITI director in terms of how that technology is installed.
Okay, I guess I'm thinking if they need to have anything installed as opposed to using a wireless signal, a cellular service or something like that, then they will be conferring with Victor on that, I hope.
I do believe that currently they do have an agreement to have some level of technology support that they are also bringing over. It is my understanding that they have their own IT support that provides some technology support for them. In terms of resources, we've made sure that there's a segregation, that's a bad word, that the, their operation is not in a mingle with the township's network and resources, so they can stand alone. And we definitely will work to maintain that status quo.
Okay, thank you.
So Victor, would, in other words, I guess, would a router, could they put a router in downstairs or something for their own signal, for their phones?
They can accomplish that through their phones, or they can accomplish that through the township Wi-Fi, which is open to any general public.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Approve the lease between the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities and Canton Township and authorize the supervisor to sign necessary-
and authorize the supervisor to sign necessary documents.
Madam Supervisor, before we have a motion on that, I would like to move to recuse Clerk Seeger from voting on this item.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Berninski, supported by Steven, Mr. Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Dana, want to read the motion?
Madam Supervisor, I move that Canton approve the lease between the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities and Canton Township. This lease only goes into effect if and when the sale of the Village Arts Factory is approved, at which time the start date of the lease may be amended by the township to reflect the appropriate effective date and authorize the supervisor to sign all necessary documents.
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Ganguly, supported by Trustee Berninski. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything to this?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, with the township's purchase of Village Arts Factory, there was a desire for the Partnership for the Arts and Humanities to remain in the commercial space commonly known as the Partnership for Arts Warehouse and Veterans Dormitory at 250 South Ridge. The proposed lease only goes into effect if and when the sale of the Village Arts Factory is approved, at which time the start date of the lease may be amended by the township to reflect the appropriate effective date. This proposed lease is for 48 months, beginning on November 1st, 2023 until October 31st, 2027. It will automatically renew for a 48-month term after the first term of the lease has expired or terminated. The total rent for the premises for the first term shall be the sum of $96,000 in lawful money, the U.S. payable in monthly installments of $2,000. Any questions or comments from the board?
Want to make a quick comment. I'm glad it's for 48 months because I know I've talked to the deputy supervisor regarding property taxes, the cap will be lifted, and so we do have wiggle room for the four years, but after that, we need to be mindful about what they will be paying on a monthly fee for property taxes.
Anyone else?
I would just add a couple things. You know, the, you know, the RBA talks about the rents that will be collected. If you look at the lease itself, there's also a payment that the partnership will be making to the township to recuperate lost tax revenue. That's $36,000 over the first four-year term. And for custodial service and maintenance, and that's a $48,000 total in the first four years as well. The partnership's also agreed to make an investment in the capital of the buildings in the first four years of $50,000. So, in addition to the rents, there are some pretty substantial revenue streams coming from this agreement as well.
Steven?
I just wanted to thank everyone involved in making this happen. I know Deputy Supervisor, you put a lot of hours into this, also working with finance and others here on the board. You know, the Village Theater's been an asset owned by this community, the government of this community, for a couple decades now, and it's really just been a gem for us as a community. And that was started by the Partnership for the Arts as well, when that was built. And I just see this as an extension of that mission by this organization. And I like that we have this opportunity to do the same for the factory and see the support of the arts moving forward. So, it's exciting for me.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G17, approve airspace assessment of Canton Township by Aerospace Link, which is a presentation that we had earlier today.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the budget amendment included in the AIR assessment of Canton Township by Aerospace Link and authorize the supervisor to sign the proposed agreement.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. A proposal from Aerospace Link to perform an unmanned aircraft system readiness assessment for Canton Township. This assessment will help evaluate and understand Canton Township's readiness and objectives for drone integration. Let's see, Director LaFever, do you want to add anything, or Deputy Supervisor, since you both went to other presentations?
I would just add that prior to tonight's presentation, I'd been downtown twice to the old Book Depository Building in downtown Detroit, right next to the train station, which is where Aerospace Link is located. They seem like a very impressive company, and they're doing something pretty unique in the sort of mapping of airspace. So, I was very impressed with them both times that we had the opportunity to meet and discuss what they're doing for communities throughout the country.
Thank you. John? No? So, this basically is telling us, it's an assessment telling us what capability we have in Canton to use it or not. Any questions or comments? Kate?
I just want to thank you for, once again, being on the leading edge of technology, Supervisor. And also, I'm looking forward to seeing the results of the assessment.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Great. Next on the agenda, we have public comment, and I'm going to start online. We have three attendees. If you would like to have public comment, please raise your hands. Any public comment online? Public comment? No public comment. Okay, nothing online. In the room, any public comment? Please go to the podium. Three minutes, and you can let us know your concerns, and we can get back to you.
I'd like to trust issue on the flooding, power outage that we had on the 24th of August, 25th this year. Evidently, if residents, if there was power at the summit, they could stay there. That was settled four or five years ago at a meeting here. I called, had power shortage on the 24th at 10 o'clock about. I called Canton Police Department at 2:00, 4:00, 2:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. on the 25th. It's all documented. The dispatcher had no clue if it was open or not, none. It was very obvious. There was no communications between Leisure Service and the Police Department. None at all, note. All right, let's move on here a little bit on this issue. At 7:30, I had medical equipment to run for myself. At 7:30, the dispatch knew it was open. It was open the 24th, and it was open on the 25th at 7, around 7:30. Boying over and meeting with some of the Leisure Service people, they told me it was the 24th and the 25th is open. Let's go back to the issue with the Police Department. They had no clue if it was open or not. You can't call Leisure Services at 2:00 in the morning, 10:00 at night, there's nobody that answers the phone. It seems like the Police Department would address the issue. This was supposed to be solved four or five years ago with some members of my family here. Now, let's move on a little bit. Let's see how we're moving on with the ditches over here. Ditches. I noticed that Palmer Road and Sheldon Road, I've been complaining for about five years at least, maybe every three months or more, you guys. Just forget about it. Somebody runs off into the ditch there, there's no guardrail anymore, fell into the ditch. You have a roundabout coming. I hope they have and considered, and I was there in 1980, a guy put in a pipe there, drainage pipe, about six-foot round. So, that area, you have to drain for that ditch underneath that roundabout. That's how it's set up. And a gas main, there's a main gas main, not for somebody's house, a main gas main. So, when you have these tractor-trailer trucks every now and then that run that area, some of those guys have four, five, 600 gallons of diesel fuel, and the crick is right there. You guys are all environmentalists and so forth, that'll be a good mess to clean up. Onward and deal, I'd like to know how it's coming with the cleanup on ditches for cleaning them up and straightening them out and digging them out and cleaning them out. You were supposed to meet with the county, you said. Is there an update on that? Do you have an update on that? Have you met with them? No. I still got a little bit of time here. So, I'd like to know also about Van Born Road from Canton Center Road or Belleville Road all the way to Hannon Road, that over there, that's never been cleaned up, trash all over the road. It floods over there because the dirt's a foot or two foot underneath the guardrail. It has nowhere to drain over to the ditch. It's been that way four or five years. The Police Department from time to time has closed it off over there. I'd like to know when Mr. Evans is going to have that, or you guys are going to address that issue. Now, a couple more things I'd like to do. There's a sanitary landfill over there on Hannon Road, about 25 acres on the west side, or 50 acres.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
According to my clock, ma'am, I still have about 15 seconds. I would like it. Thank you.
We have three minutes. You've done three minutes.
I'd like to know when that issue is going to be addressed, on the dump.
Thank you. Okay, anybody on the staff have any comments? Nope? Any board comments? We'll start with Tanya.
On Friday, we have the Festival of Light Celebration. It's going to be endorsed this time in indoor outdoor celebration. We will have the lighting of the lamp by our special guest, our LG Garland Gilchrist is coming, and we have different cultural celebration dances after that. We have the Hannah booth and the photo booth that we do it. It's inside the banquet center, and we are going to open the doors to the courtyard to see the fireworks. So, it's going to be a balmy 70 degrees. We were not hoping, anticipating that, but it's going to be a good time for the Hannah artists so that they don't have to do the Hannah in the dark, so please come. There will also be vendors there, and food vendors too.
Thank you. Trustee Foster?
I do not have any comments today.
Thank you. Michael?
I would just like to take this moment to thank interim Director of Municipal Services, David Norwood, for personally, personally visiting a Wayne County ditch, putting on waiters and removing debris from it, which is not in his job description, nor is it within the jurisdiction of the township. But I think that that level of care and that level of attention is phenomenal, and it makes me proud to be on the Board of Canton Township Trustees.
Thank you. Kate?
So, I wanted to add to what Tanya was saying about the celebration on Friday, that we're also, as we approve tonight, we're going to have fireworks, so that will be exciting. Also, Supervisor Graham Hudek and Deputy Supervisor Haver and I were at the Michigan Municipal League Convention last week, and I'm looking forward to discussing what we learned there and sharing.
I bet that was probably the most fun David Norwood had all week by going into the ditch and doing it, but knowing David. I just wanted to say that as part of being on this board, we set a vision and goals for our community, and right at the top of the list is that we are a welcoming community, and I'm proud of that. And I don't think there's ever a time, really in history, where things aren't difficult in the world, but the last few weeks have been extra difficult. And I just want everyone in our community, at the very least, to know that we consider everybody to be equal, and we support everyone, and we care and are concerned about everyone in our community. So, I think that's something that this board has made, made the statement as many times over the last eight years, so that's it.
Well said, Trustee. I like what everyone said, and yep, Friday will be an exciting day. We had last weekend lots of fun things with Leisure Services. And then another reminder, Halloween's coming up, so just beware as the little goblins are running around in the streets that we don't hit anybody with.
Director LaFever and Comber, I think you guys have some awards you want to talk about, certification.
Yeah, Greg and I both had the pleasure of going to Dallas last week to our national conference to accept our recertification or reaccreditation. It's been 20 years in the making now, so Leisure Services has been an accredited department for 20 years. And it was quite neat to see and kind of be amongst the few communities throughout the nation that, you know, being accredited there. In addition, our own Laura Mortier received an award, only one of 12 to receive the award nationally for a young professional in the field of recreation. So, we were very proud to go and participate in that with her as well. Then I wanted to mention, yeah. Then also on this Friday, I should have mentioned earlier, but we invite the public to come and join us as we go through the naming of ZBOS Nature Area out at Ford and Ridge Road, 1 o'clock on Friday.
Great, thank you. Good job. It's going to be a great ceremony. The Pawatomi are going to be there. Indian tribe, they're going to be doing blessings, right? And they're going to be doing drumming, and what else is on the list?
Yep, dancers, drumming, the whole ceremony.
Very cool. So, that's at 1 o'clock, so we want to get everybody there. And then after that, we go over to the Diwali Festival. And then Victor is leading our teams through, just to let everybody know, through the ERP. So, we brought in some companies, and they looked at our systems, and he's going to be working with all the employees and giving, these companies are going to be giving demos of each of their systems, so we can review them and see where we need to go, what it needs to happen. Next week, our Wendy's going to be giving us a budget on November 1st, a big budget interview, so we'll be able to see where all our money is going and wisely spent. Director Stockline, you just did, you went to Lansing, and you worked with, what did you do? You testified.
Yeah, we testified on the Senate bill that's going through to remove the National Registry for the paramedic. So, hopefully, we can get back to running local classes and having a state administered test, and that'll make it easier for us to bring paramedics into the field.
And this morning, we met with some faith leaders from around the community. We invited them here and talked to them about joining the Canton Coalition for Inclusive Communities, so they all can get to know each other and continue conversations. And so, it went real well. They were really surprised. They kind of, I don't think they knew what the meeting was about, the Canton CCIC. So, our public safety team kind of talked to them and told them about, you know, how communities can work together, the nonprofits can work together, and I think we have a bunch of members now, which is good. And they want to share resources amongst each other, too. And there was also conversation on actually what's happening in the Middle East. So, there are various sides there, but it was very, you know, civil, and I think we had, a lot of friendships were made amongst them, which is what the goal was, which is great. So, good job. I know, so you better find a bigger room, Director Bow, because you're going to have more people. Just a couple other things. So, the county did do some ditch cleaning. We have been meeting, we did meet with them. I think we've talked about it at other meetings. We're looking at bringing away trim to look at some of our drain challenges around the community, so they'll be making a report to the board. And I think that's all I had. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Supervisor, I just wanted to, you briefly mentioned that we will be meeting next week on November 1st. I just wanted to make sure that everyone who's watching knows that we will not be here on Tuesday next week. We will be here on Wednesday.
It's Halloween. We can't be here. It's Halloween, we can't be here. We'll be out there watching the little kids. Okay. Motion to adjourn, please?
Support.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Foster and Trustee Snyderman altogether. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned.